Ryan Singer, who is our Senior Director of Land Use and Commission Operations, is going to outline general information on about this remote public hearing and how to participate.
Thank you. Good morning. Verbal testimony may be provided online through the NYC Engage portal or by calling in on your telephone. If you wish to speak and plan to access the hearing online, please register through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. A link to join the hearing is on the landing page after you register. Please do not close the landing page without first clicking on the link. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with the dial-in participant hotline at the numbers listed on the screen. If one of the numbers is busy, please try another. The meeting ID is 618-237-7396. The participant ID, just press pound to skip that, and the password is the numeral 1. The phone number is also posted on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. Please note that whether you're accessing this meeting online or by phone, you must register if you want to speak. Those accessing the meeting online will have the option to turn on their camera while giving testimony. We're still testing this. It was a successful trial last time, but we're still in the testing phase. So when it is your turn to speak, you'll be notified and promoted to a panelist. This will allow you to unmute your microphone and the ability to give you the ability to turn on your camera. Please listen closely for your name to be called. There will be a short period where it will appear that you are no longer in the meeting. Do not be alarmed. You should rejoin the meeting as a panelist. Please note that promoting speakers does take a little bit longer, so we want some patience there. If you're accessing the hearing via phone, your name will be called from the list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. You do this by pressing star six to mute your phone. For those listening to the hearing through the online livestream who have not yet registered to speak but wish but decide that they want to do so during the hearing, they must first register to speak through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. It's not possible to testify through the online livestream without first having registered. For those accessing the hearing via phone who have not yet registered to speak but wish to do so, you must also first register to speak through the dial-in participant hotline that I described a moment ago. It's not possible to testify via phone without having first registered. Speakers are limited to three minutes of testimony. There are few exceptions to the three-minute time limit. Elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping in front of the queue and are not limited to three minutes. If consecutive translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And if an applicant team of three or more speakers wishes to make a team presentation, the team will generally be allowed a total of 10 minutes. The chair will announce when the time limit is reached. Please be mindful of potential background noise during your testimony. Please make sure that if you're watching the proceedings via livestream, that the livestream is muted when you begin your testimony. Otherwise, you will hear an echo. If you wish to submit written testimony, it should be submitted to the Department of City Planning. The mailing and email addresses can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. And lastly, please note that this remote public hearing and all testimony provided is being recorded.
Thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to the Secretary to begin the meeting.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage portal. Today is Wednesday, March 3, 2021. I will now call the role. Chair Lago. Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie. Commissioner Bernie. Commissioner Capelli. Commissioner Sirulo.
Here.
I'm here.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Oh, okay.
Here.
Okay, Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Commissioner Levin. I'm here. I'm having real internet difficulties this morning.
Okay. Commissioner Marin.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rampachet. A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, February 17, 2021.
On the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are adopted.
Schedule in.
Aye.
On calendar numbers one through, we have resolutions for adoption scheduled on Wednesday, March 17, 2021, for a remote public hearing to be held through the Engage NYC Engage portal.
On the resolutions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar section on page nine. Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers seven through 10. Calendar numbers CDs 10 and 11. Calendar number seven, C200276HAM, concerning Harlem Open Door Cluster. Calendar number eight, C200277HAM, concerning Harlem NCP CB11. Calendar number nine, C200278HAM, concerning Central Harlem Infill NCP. Calendar number 10, C200279HAM, concerning Harlem NCP Western Site. In the matter of application for a UDF designation, project approval and disposition of city-owned properties, for favorable reports on calendar numbers seven, eight, nine and 10. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duette.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers seven, eight, nine and 10. Borough of Queens, calendar numbers 11 and 12, CD2. Calendar number 11, C200243ZMQ. Calendar number 12, N200244ZRQ. In the matter of application for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 50-25 Bonnet Avenue rezoning, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 11 and 12. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duette.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet. Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Okay. Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 11, 12. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 13, CD2, C200356PPK. A public hearing, I'm sorry, report. In the matter of an application for the disposition of city-owned property concerning 69 Adams Street, for a favorable report on calendar number 13. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
I'd just say it's a little disappointing to me that the it seems the proceeds from the sale of this property go back to the EDC coffers and are not used for improvements to the public realm in the area, such as subway improvements that would mitigate some of the increased density. And it's also disappointing that DOT seem to be reluctant to undertake any review of the use of their space under the bridge for storage and so on. And maybe City Council can take up that matter, but having said that, I vote yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duette.
I'd like to echo the comments of Commissioner Bernie, and I vote yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
I too join Commissioner Bernie and also vote yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar number favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 13. Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers 14 and 15, CD4. Calendar number 14, C210103ZMX. Calendar number 15, N210104ZRX. In the matter of application for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 1099 Webster Avenue, for favorable reports on calendar numbers 14 and 15. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duette.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 14 and 15. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 16, 16 and 17. CD1, calendar number 16, N210217ZAR. Calendar number 17, N210218ZAR. In the matter of application for the grant of authorizations concerning 279 Stanley Avenue for adoption on calendar numbers 16 and 17. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bern.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duette.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 16 and 17 have been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 18 and 19. CD1, calendar number 18, N210211ZAR. Calendar number 19, N210212ZAR. In the matter of application for the grant of authorization concerning 285 Stanley Avenue for adoption on calendar numbers 18 and 19. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duette.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet. Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 18 and 19 have been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 20 and 21, CD3. Calendar number 20, N200341RAR. Calendar number 21, N200340RAR. In the matter of application for a grant of authorization concerning West Castor Place for adoption on calendar numbers 20 and 21. Vice Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duette.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 20 and 21 have been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 22, CD3, N210163RCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 4448 and 452452 and 454 Robinson Avenue for adoption on calendar number 22. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duette.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar number 22 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 23, CD2, N210079R. In the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning Altman Avenue and St. Andrews Road for adoption on calendar number 23. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo. Commissioner Sirulo.
I'm saying yes.
Okay, I couldn't hear you, sorry.
That's okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar number 23 has been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 22. Borough of the Bronx, numbers 24 and 25, CD6. Calendar number 24, C210027ZMX. Calendar number 25, N210028ZRX. A public hearing in the matter of application for a zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning Arthur Avenue Hotel rezoning.
We will have a 10-minute presentation by an applicant team comprised of Pablo Choclin, Naim Basrahtari, Sandra Erickson, Linda Basrahtari, Harry Basrahtari, Nora Martin and Joseph McKenzie.
Thank you. Nora Martins from Acorn M L L P, Land Use Council for the Project. Good morning, Chair Lago and Commissioners. I'm joined today by Harry Basrahtari, Naim Basrahtari, Linda Basrahtari and Sandra Erickson, the Development Team, as well as Pablo Choclin from Off Gang Architects and Joe McKenzie from Philip and Bevan Associates. So we should be able to answer any questions that the Commissioner may have. I'll turn it over right now to Harry just to say a few words to introduce the project.
Good morning, Chair Lago, Commissioners. Thank you for giving us the opportunity on this project. Last month, I celebrated 51 years coming to America. I have been working in the Bronx for over 40 years. I started in 1977, 149th Street. I still have the second building I bought in 1978 on East Kingsbridge Road. I've been part of the Bronx more than 40-some years now. Bronx has been wonderful to me and my family. I have been in Arthur Avenue for over 30 years on East 188th Street. It took me over 10 years to put this package of properties together. I think a hotel in Arthur Avenue, it will it will be a huge asset to Arthur Avenue, a huge asset to the Bronx, a huge asset to the community. We need a destination where people will come and stay. We have within walking distance the zoo, the garden, Fordham University, Mount of Fury, St. Bonners, the Yankees. It's a it's a great, I'm excited about the project. I'm hoping that we can get this done and make it a reality. It's been my vision. It's been my dream. Bronx has been wonderful to me and my family. I will turn this to Nora. Thank you again for giving us an opportunity to present this project to you.
Thank you, Harry. Next slide, please. This application seeks zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment to facilitate development of the hotel and residential buildings on Arthur Avenue in Bronx CB6. Next slide, please. The site location is located on a property that's bounded by East 188th Street, Arthur Avenue and Hughes Avenue, right in the heart of the Belmont Bronx Little Italy neighborhood. Next slide. This slide shows photos of existing development at the site, which comprised lower-density residential and commercial development and a funeral home. None of the residential units are rent-stabilized and all of the commercial establishments will be assisted in relocation. We're all aware of the proposed development. And one of the largest one is Basrahtari Realty, which will relocate in the neighborhood to another site that they own on Hoffman Avenue, staying in the neighborhood. Next slide. As Harry mentioned, this area is ideally situated for hotel development, surrounded by world-renowned destinations and prestigious institutions, several of which submitted letters of support and I believe you'll be hearing from later today. Next slide, please. The project site, which is located just north of Chikorani Park, is situated just at the beginning of the Arthur Avenue retail corridor, which is characterized by commercial, retail and, I think maybe most importantly, restaurants that have been in the area some for nearly 100 years, making it a true destination and a treasure in the Bronx. Next slide. With regard to the need for a hotel, just for comparison, there are about 906 hotels in New York City. Based on the latest data available, in the Bronx, only 64 hotels. Within a mile of the site, there is only there are only 10 hotels. Next slide. However, of those 10 hotels, only three actually are really operating as hotels with services right now. And the closest hotel to this area, the Bronx Park Motel, actually is recently listed on the market for sale. Next slide. So the proposed development will maximize the 6.0 if they are permitted under the proposed rezoning, allowing a 13-story hotel building on the corner of Arthur Avenue and East 188th Street, which would have approximately 146 rooms, active ground floor uses along Arthur Avenue and East 188th Street, and 128 accessory parking spaces. And then the residential building component would be fronting on Hughes Avenue and East 188th Street, a seven-story building that's lower in scale to be in context with the residential character of Hughes Avenue and would contain 56 dwelling units, 17 permanently affordable units pursuant to MIH workforce option. Option four, we are mapping options, seeking to map options two and four, but proposing option four, which we'll discuss later in the presentation. And that would include 28 required accessory parking spaces. Next slide. And with regard to the hotel that's proposed, there is no operator selected yet, given the uncertainty of the rezoning process and unfortunately, the ongoing pandemic, but very confident in interest at this location, intending to be at a minimum a three-star hotel and potentially a four-star hotel as this location can draw guests from all over, Fordham parents, tourists, people visiting for the weekend to go to the zoo, dinner on Arthur Avenue, attending weddings at the Botanical Gardens, events at Fordham, visiting doctors. And there's a huge pool of potential guests for this location. Here's the site plan, which shows the curb cut and parking entrance to parking on Arthur Avenue. This was carefully evaluated as the best entrance. Arthur Avenue of the three streets surrounding the site is the best, given that it's the widest. There's also an existing curb cut at this location. So the proposed development will be widening the curb cut and the existing curb cut is active. So this would not be a new condition introduced to the pedestrians on Arthur Avenue. And to the next slide, please. Ground floor plan shows the parking, which will be at grade and will be screened along Hughes Avenue. And you can see the retail along East 188th Street and the hotel entrances there. Next slide. Cellar plan showing the remainder of the parking. Next slide. Renderings of the hotel and the residential building. Next slide. And this is a new rendering view from, it's a bird's eye view actually from Fordham Road. The reason it's a bird's eye is because from the pedestrian viewpoint on Fordham Road, you actually can't really see the proposed 13-story hotel building. Next slide. Now I'll turn it over to Naim Basrahtari to discuss the proposed residential program and market rents.
Good morning, Commissioners. On the units here, we have 56, 56 proposed units. 56 proposed units, nearly half of them are going to be two and three-bedroom units. We're trying to design them to accommodate the working families, which is what we're looking for in this market. These are not intended to be student or transitional housing. It's looking towards working families to stay and live in this neighborhood so they don't price themselves out because they make more money and they can stay and grow families here. Next slide, please. The workforce option allows us for an average of about 115% of the AMI. So with that potential, we have the 17 units, which will include a 70% AMI, 90% and a 130 AMI. And looking at that as frame of reference for two retail workers making $30,000, $15 an hour per hour, where they would qualify for the 70% one-bedroom unit. A registered nurse with an average of $75,000 salary with a part-time retail worker with about 15, with one child, they would qualify for 90% AMI, one-bedroom unit. And then we look at another option of the 32 BJ Dormin, making about $52,000 with a public school teacher with about a $57,000 starting salary. They would qualify, that couple would qualify for the 130 AMI one-bedroom unit. So it gives a wide range to cover everybody who's working. Those AMI set the rents, if you see on the slide here, the two-bedroom will be about $1,671 for the 70%, about $22,183 for the 90% and at the highest, $32.08 of the 130. By comparison, the market rents right now is somewhere around $1,900 for a rent-stabilized two-bedroom unit in that area, all the way up to $3,000, $3,600 for the student unit, non-stabilized units in that market, that sub-market there. So there we feel that it's right in that spot where you can really, it works out for everybody. And we're also trying to make a new high-quality construction elevator building with the amenities that go with it as well and with the permanent stabilization, that's all from there. Next slide. Just the project benefits that also come from this. A new hotel results in employment in the Bronx that's over there. Increased customer base is what we're hoping for as well, too, with the restaurants, increase in sales tax. Opportunities for a lot of partnerships also between the 12 hotel and the local businesses to even grow that more. 231 direct construction jobs, an estimate of 127 indirect jobs, you know, assisting the direct job, 58 permanent jobs after that. And then again, the housing is 56 new quality units in the neighborhood, which needs it, with 17 permanently affordable units.
Thank you.
And next.
At this point, I'm sorry of the time.
We're done. Yeah, I was just gonna say that we're done. Thank you.
Fine, thank you. And at this point, I will turn it over to Commissioners. And we'll start with Commissioner Capelli.
Yes. Do you have, have you selected anybody to operate the hotel? If this is approved?
No, we don't have a hotel operator selected yet. You know, preliminary conversations have been had, which have been unfortunately put on pause due to the impacts to the hotel industry during the pandemic. But there has been interest in the site and I'm very confident that we will find an operator that makes, that will really put a quality product here.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. With regard to the hotel, you're planning 146 units. How did you conclude that that was a proper number or an accurate number for this location?
I'll let Naim answer that question.
Yeah, am I on mute? Okay. The 146. The 146 rooms came from because on the on the financing side of this to finance a hotel, most hotels are financed, the beginning part, most they'll go with is about 150 rooms. So 150 room hotel is the max financing on a new construction like this without a market established. I can't, there's no other motel that I can go to a bank and say that this is how many rooms and this is how that's on. It's a new product. The only thing I have to show is what you can do in Manhattan and what's happening in Southern Westchester. There's no market for the bank when you're proposing it to them within the Bronx. So I have to show them that 150 rooms, which is what their standard is. And that's what we think also will that's you'll have max occupancy at about 150 rooms hotel for the year round. Of the 146 was was a number came out with the spacing to make larger rooms.
Okay, thank you. A quick follow up regarding the residential housing and the the workforce option that you that you lay out exceeds the AMI for the local community. So where do you anticipate your market coming from from this house for this housing?
We're we're anticipating the market from the people that right now travel to the Bronx to work, that used to live in the Bronx, but they've priced themselves out because they can't get a rent stabilized unit. They make too much for any other kind of housing within the Bronx. So there and there's no new construction in the area. So from anecdotally speaking to when I'm on Arthur Avenue, we had lunch, talked to nurses who work in the area, a nurse who's married to a school teacher makes too much to afford somewhere within the Bronx often, and they can't get a rent stabilized. So we're hoping that they don't get priced out and they can still, they can come to work and live in the area as well, both of them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dweck.
No, I lowered my hand. Commissioner Knuckles hit my question, so we're good.
Thank you. Commissioner Rampershot.
So Vice Chair Knuckles actually asked the question I was gonna ask. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Sorry, guys.
I think it's more, thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question. You know, obviously Arthur Avenue is a really dynamic neighborhood in our city. I just wondered if this, it's hard for me to tell, I don't have the map of the local business improvement district to see where that is located with respect to the site. I wondered if it was in the bid district and if so, have there been communications with the business improvement district? And they're doing amazing work there. And even in this year, which is obviously a really difficult one for brick and mortar and our neighborhoods. And if it isn't, you know, are there discussions? Is it nearby? And and how there are some synergies between the development, those who will who will be visiting there, those who will be living there, and obviously the services that the bid provides?
Yes, great question. And we have been working extremely closely with the Belmont bid. Actually, I think we'll be speaking later and submitted a letter in support.
Oh, good. She's terrific.
The hotel project and Harry has a very long relationship with them. And I think everyone sees the amazing possibilities here for helping out the businesses on on Arthur Avenue.
Terrific, terrific. Thank you. And then just a quick question, is it in the bid or is it?
Yes.
Is it actually in the bid district? It is in the bid district. Okay, great. All right, thank you so much.
Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, first I just wanted to compliment the applicant team on a really effective, direct, clear, full of information presentation. We usually don't see presentations that are as strong as that one. So thank you very much for that. I wanted to ask the, I guess, a question that I and you hit basically all of the questions that we had when this app, when we first saw this application, but there is one that's, you know, sort of further down on the list that I had at the review session that I wanted to ask about. And that is the open space that's being designed on the interior portion of the hotel that looks like it will also be underneath residential windows. And I'm wondering how that open space will be used by hotel guests and what attention you're paying to the quality of life concerns that may present.
Yes, I'm sorry. Actually, we had updated the site plan to respond to that question and I skipped over it by accident. We, the that open space that will be open to hotel guests is going to be designed as passive recreation space. It will be landscaped with some seating and it will be screened with planting. Sensing plantings landscaping, you know, still to be designed, but to make sure that there is no impact on the adjacent residential building that we're proposing or the existing residential.
Okay, good. So no cafe service, you know, food and beverage going on?
No, the idea is not that that would be available for events or or anything.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Other questions? Then I'll thank the applicant team. And we will then turn to our next speaker, who is Erin Boeska.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. I hope that everybody can hear me. Yes.
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Lago and commissioners. I am Erin Boeska, Vice President at the New York Botanical Garden. And on behalf of the New York Botanical Garden, I express our support for the reference rezoning, which would allow for the development of new hotel and residential building, a property bounded by Arthur Avenue, East 188th Street and Hughes Avenue in the Belmont section in the Bronx. NYBG is now celebrating our 130th anniversary as an anchor institution in the Bronx. We're a major employer of Bronx residents, an educator of youth and adults, a major tourist engine, and a worldwide scientific research institution. But our home has been and always will be this corner of the Bronx. We share this neighborhood with some rather remarkable neighbors, the Bronx Zoo, Fordham University, St. Barnabas Hospital, and the residents and businesses of Arthur Avenue. Together, we make up a rather unique neighborhood ecosystem that people value and visit often, even during this global pandemic. It is our understanding that the proposed rezoning would facilitate the development of an of two new buildings, including a 13 story hotel and a seven story residential building, building located on Hughes Avenue. Line with shops, restaurants, and markets, Arthur Avenue is a vibrant cultural and culinary destination that has earned the title of Bronx's Little Italy. As you know, there's a lack of quality full service hotels throughout the Bronx and extremely limited hotel options near the Belmont neighborhood. Arthur Avenue is, however, a strategic location for a hotel, given its location at the heart of Little Italy, Little Italy, and proximity to the academic and cultural attractions that welcome people from around the corner and across the globe. As one of these neighborhood institutions, we encourage the City Planning Commission to support the proposed rezoning. As New York City recovers from the pandemic, we believe neighborhoods like ours, with its vibrant cultural offerings, will be a catalyst for local and citywide economic recovery. New York City is defined by our neighborhoods, our vibrant cultural institutions, our diversity of people, thoughts, and businesses. A project such as this one would only enhance this unique ecosystem in the Bronx while aiding our residential neighborhoods, neighbors, and small businesses with additional economic activity. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to comment, commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony and also for your background photo. I was up at the Botanical Gardens a few weeks ago, and while people think of it in the spring and summer, it is equally magical in the winter covered with snow. So thank you.
And thank you.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Boeska. I just wanted to ask you, there was some suggestion that the building may cast shadows on an adjacent park. And I'm wondering, you know, as a botanist, do you have any concerns about that?
I haven't seen the the environmental impacts yet. Obviously, I have more concern about what's going on with our colleagues in Brooklyn right now with the Brooklyn Botanic Garden. But without having seen any of those studies, Commissioner, I'm sorry, I just really feel that I wouldn't be able to issue a sort of thoughtful analysis on that until I see it.
Okay, understood.
Other questions?
You can come back and see the 960 Franklin in a couple of weeks, I think, so.
Well, thank you for taking the time to testify.
Thank you, Chair.
Our next speaker will be Alyssa Tucker.
Good morning, Chair Lago and commissioners. On behalf of the Belmont Business Improvement District, I support, I express our support for this rezoning, which will facilitate the development of a new hotel and residential building on a property within the Belmont Business Improvement District, which is bounded by Arthur Avenue, East 188th Street and Hughes Avenue, directly across from Chikoroni Park in the Belmont neighborhood. It is our understanding that the proposed rezoning would facilitate the development of two new buildings, including a 13 story hotel with 146 guest rooms on Arthur Avenue and a seven story 56 unit residential building located on Hughes Avenue. The proposed hotel development includes 128 parking spaces and the proposed residence includes 28 parking spaces. Our community is lined with a plethora of small family owned businesses comprising of gourmet food shops, restaurants, businesses, and personal services, eateries, and more. An economic as well as a cultural engine, data has repeatedly shown that the Bronx Little Italy neighborhood hosts thousands of regional and local shoppers as well as domestic and international tourists every year, making it one of the busiest and best known communities of New York City. Yet there are extremely limited hotel options in our neighborhood and a lack of quality full service hotels throughout Bronx Community Board Six. We understand that the commission had some comments at the review session regarding the proposed location of the hotel on Arthur Avenue instead of on Fordham Road. Having a hotel within easy walking distance of all our restaurants and businesses, a hotel that is actually in the heart of Little Italy neighborhood is ideal. We believe Arthur Avenue is the perfect place for a hotel, given it is the main thoroughfare of the community and its close proximity to several cultural attractions and institutions, including the Bronx Zoo, the Botanical Garden, Fordham University, and medical institutions like St. Barnabas Hospital and others. With the development of this hotel, Bronx Little Italy guests would be able to extend their stay and visit more of the great destinations the Bronx has to offer, including the ones I had just mentioned. Further, parents of Fordham University students and family members of St. Barnabas Health Health System would have the convenience of being able to stay right in the neighborhood when they're visiting. Our data has shown that 85% of Bronx Little Italy visitors drive here, making additional parking a crucial need for the neighborhood. The addition of 156 parking spaces between the two developments is another benefit of the proposed project. We work to support the economic well being of the local businesses and the community at large by promoting our brands, and we are thrilled to see that a hotel is finally being proposed on Arthur Avenue. We really believe it will have a positive effect on the community and economic development.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for taking the time to testify.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be John Calvelli.
Good morning, Commissioner, Commissioner Lago and other commissioners. My name is John Calvelli. I'm the Executive Vice President for the Wildlife Conservation Society. We actually run the Bronx Zoo, the New York Aquarium, the Prospect Park Zoo, the Queen Zoo, and the Central Park Zoo. But our home and our headquarters is in the Bronx at the Bronx Zoo. I wanted to come on personally because I know the Barak Tari family for over 30 years. And I think one of the things that we've spoken a great deal about is the impact of this of this hotel on the area, and it's valid. We have approximately 4 million people come to this area. The Bronx Zoo alone is approximately 2 million of those. We're the largest employer of youth in the borough, we're a major economic engine for the city of New York, and yet we don't have any hotels nearby where we can send people that want to come. How do we build our base of visitors outside of the region? With a hotel nearby, we would be able to market our facility in a much broader way. But I did want to come back to the Barak Tari family. I have worked with them on many issues over the years. And candidly, we as a community are always concerned about what is going to come into the area. Is it going to be a white elephant? That is the are the people that are developing the project really have the best interests of the community at heart? And as you think about that, it's very hard to put that on paper. It's very hard for people to understand that. But I wanted to come on to say that knowing this family as I do, they're committed to making sure that this is going to be the best possible project, not only for the Bronx, but for the region. And for all the reasons that you've heard already, we are a major anchor institutions. I my colleague, Aaron Bushka, from the New York Botanical Garden spoke earlier. We're younger, we're only 126 years old. And at the end of the day, we're not going anywhere. We're here, we're committed to this borough, and we're also committed to the economic revival of the borough after this pandemic. And candidly, your your vote soon will play a major role in the future of this area and the future of the people that work there and call it home. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. And I see that Vice Chair Knuckles has a question.
Good to see you, Vice Chair.
I'm afraid that you're muted, Vice Chair.
Oh, I just said hello to John Cavelli and it was good to see you.
Good to see you, sir. Good to see. I feel like a little bit of a reunion here. There's many old friends here and I know that you all have the best interests of the city at heart, and I can speak from my heart that this is going to be very good for the Bronx.
Commissioner Capelli.
I just wanted to echo that it's good to see you, John. It's been a long time and happy to see you doing well.
You know, I would say in in future years, I look forward to seeing all of you on Arthur Avenue at a great restaurant, and I hear there's going to be a great hotel there. So you could stay overnight and go to the garden and come to the zoo.
And I will put in a plug for your zoo lights doing that. Even despite the pandemic, just felt so healthy and normal and seeing the kids be delighted by the lights and lanterns was extraordinary.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Okay, our next speaker will be William Colonna.
Good morning. My name is William Colonna, and I'm Fordham University's Director of Government Relations, Federal and Urban Affairs. And on behalf of Fordham University, I'm here to express our support of the Arthur Avenue Hotel and Residences Development Project. The Bronx's history, cultural offerings, world class events, and educational institutions are only some of the reasons that make our borough a tourism destination in New York City. Now, throughout the year, Fordham hosts several events that welcome many visitors to our Roseville Campus, including move in and orientation, athletic competitions, conferences, and other special programs, campus tours for prospective students, and commencement. And many of these events bring hundreds of visitors to the Northwest Bronx who sometimes travel to Manhattan or Westchester for more convenient overnight accommodations. The Arthur Avenue Hotel and Residences Development Project, once completed, will provide a more convenient option for our visitors, accommodations that'll be a walk that'll be walking distance from our campus, and opening up the opportunity for them to experience other attractions in our neighborhood, such as exhibits of the Bronx Zoo and the New York Botanical Gardens, restaurants in Little Italy, and shopping along Fordham Road. We strongly urge the Planning Commission to give this project serious consideration as it undergoes the Uniform Land Use Review Procedure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colonna. Questions? Again, thank you for your testimony. And Ryan, those are all the speakers who have signed up to speak. Could you check if others have signed up during the course of the hearing?
We have no further speakers on this item.
Okay, then this public hearing is closed.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, all. Our next item, Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers 26 and 27, CD1, calendar number 26, C200286ZMX, calendar number 27, N200287ZRX. A public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 261 Walton Avenue.
We will have a team, a 10 minute team presentation by a team comprised of Joshua Weissman, William Ballinger, Nora Martins, John Wolfling, and Warren George.
Hi, good morning, Chair Lago and Commissioners. This is Nora Martins from Acre Men LLP. Hello again. I'm joined today by Joshua Weissman and Bill Ballinger from J. Kell Development and John Wolfling from Datner Architects for this presentation. Other team members are available for questions if necessary. On this application, sorry, next slide. This application seeks a zoning map and zoning text amendment to facilitate development of a 12 story mixed use affordable housing building, 261 Walton Avenue in the South Bronx, Community District One. I'd like to note that although Community Board One did not issue a recommendation, they did hold a public hearing and vote and voted at their full board meeting, and they approved this land use application and project by a vote of 15, four, three opposed, and two abstentions. The zoning map amendment seeks to change an MX 13 M14 R6A zoning district to an R8A C24 zoning district. And the zoning text amendment seeks to establish an NIH area, option one. Next. As you can see from the zoning change map, the existing M14 R6A district permits mixed use development as of right. the existing M14R6A district permits mixed-use development as of right now, and the surrounding blocks, while currently occupied by manufacturing uses, are all zoned to permit as-of-right residential and commercial development. The proposed rezoning will increase the residential FAR from three-point-six to seven-point-two, making affordable housing development feasible at this location. From a land use and planning perspective, it also makes sense to map the C2 overlay for continuity given surrounding content. Next. This photograph shows existing conditions of the site, including the boarded-up self-storage facility that the proposed development will replace, was unfortunately destroyed in the fire in two thousand and seventeen. While this shows the current neighborhood context, I'm going to turn it over to John Wolfling now to discuss how this area is rapidly evolving with significant residential development planned and under construction. Next.
Thank you, Nora. So, yes, this is really a neighborhood in transition, in large part because of some of the rezonings that have happened along the Harlem River waterfront at the 425 Grand Concourse site, which is going to include a thirty-thousand-square-foot student center for CUNY Hostos and some of the other many developments in the neighborhood. There is, and this is actually a partial map. There is a lot of construction that is underway along the Grand Concourse between one hundred and forty-fourth and one hundred and thirty-eighth street. And it's all, you know, there's going to be thousands of units of residential built in the next couple of years, and especially before our project will be complete. So this neighborhood is really going to be changing over the next few years. Next slide, please. So our project, as Nora mentioned, is going to be within twelve stories. We're going to fully utilize all the FAR primarily for residential. We're going to be using the MIH program to designate permanently affordable units. Approximately forty-eight of the one hundred and ninety apartments are going to be permanently affordable. We are actually also providing parking at this location. There is some unique geometry and unique topography that allows us to tuck some parking that's not required, but it seems like it would be a good thing to provide in the neighborhood. The access to that will be along Gerard Avenue on the west side of the site. We are also going to be providing, like many of the other projects in the neighborhood, a mixed-use facility about nineteen thousand square feet. That's going to be split up into two spaces, seven thousand square feet and about twelve thousand square feet. Next, please. This is a visualization of the project. We've got both some vertical articulation and horizontal articulation to make the massing more interesting. We're also creating a ground-floor base to anchor the building onto this varied topography. That base, as you'll see in some of the next slides, next, please, is going to be an active, vibrant base with lots of glazing. It's going to be a continuation of what I think will occur in this neighborhood, a vibrant corridor down Walton Avenue that'll connect that CUNY Hostos Center to the subway station to the south. There'll be lots of people moving eastward or walking eastward from the residential developments along the Harlem River waterfront over to the subway. So there is going to be a lot of foot traffic along here. Next. And there was also, there were some questions earlier about what the Gerard frontage will look like. Now, this is not, this is more of a technical drawing as opposed to one of the professional rendered visualizations, but it does start to give you a sense of where we're going to be able to have glazing on the west side of the building. And you can see that base that continues across. The windows that are at the top of that base are going to be through, there'll be windows for those through space, commercial spaces. Down at the base of that is louvers for the parking area that's just behind that. Next.
Hi, good morning. This is Joshua Weissman of JCal Development. Can you, everyone hear me? Okay, JCal Development is a local Bronx-based development and construction company that's located in Mod Haven within Community Board One, and we are focused on affordable housing in the Bronx and northern Manhattan as well as market rate development that's primarily in the Mod Haven area. Next slide, please. In most of our buildings, we have ground-floor commercial space that are leased to various different commercial uses. We have helped create the Alexander Avenue Commercial Corridor with local entrepreneurs such as the Lip Bar and Noel Santos, which is the only bookstore in the entire borough of the Bronx, Bistro, which is a hip-hop-themed restaurant and bar, Monty's Pizza, and a gourmet deli. But we have tenants like supermarkets, Blink and Crunch Gyms, Laundromats, Brightside Daycare, and Fresenius Dialysis Center in some of our other buildings. We consider our tenants to be our partners, so we do everything that we can do to provide them with a space that's ready for them to create their vision. So when we're building our buildings, we make sure that the commercial spaces have electric, gas, venting, everything that's very difficult to do after the fact, so that these commercial tenants can go in there and create their inside space and create their dream. Next slide, please. In our most recent completed project that was done in two thousand and twenty, we have a beautiful and state-of-the-art supermarket located on the ground floor. This property was located at twenty-three ninety-five Frederick Douglass Boulevard and was part of a city disposition and upzoning. It's one hundred percent affordable, and we have a fresh bonus supermarket. This supermarket operator has signed an LOI for this project that we're discussing with you, and they would have a state-of-the-art supermarket, just like you see here. Next slide, please, to see another, okay, we'll wait on that. As just, I thought it was the other slide, but as discussed, as John mentioned before in that map before, the amount of residential construction in the area surrounding our property is immense. Lightstone Group purchased all of those lots along the waterfront from one thirty-eighth street north, and the lots that a gentleman named Henry Kessler owned in the Lower Grand Concourse are already being constructed. We are a stone's throw away from the subway stop, which is really one block away from us. And we realize that currently this area is not only a food desert but a commercial desert. But that's going to change, as we're already seeing thousands of units under construction and thousands of more that are entering the pipeline over the next twelve months. So we believe there will be a need for commercial spaces as residents are going to be coming and are going to be looking for commercial areas in an underserved area that's been for too long. Next slide, please. And with our remaining time, I just wanted to say this project is a one-hundred percent affordable housing development. We have one hundred and ninety units, which has been updated since last time in response to the comments from the Bronx Borough President's Office to include forty percent family-sized units, which thirty percent will be two bedrooms and ten percent will be three bedrooms. Again, it's a one-hundred percent affordable housing project, and we range from studios, ones, twos, and three-bedroom units. And I think we're almost out of time, so I can say thank you so much to Chairs and Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And we'll now turn it over to Commissioners for questions. Commissioner, please.
Hi, thank you, and I see that you took some time responding to my concerns. I am appreciative of that, and I I appreciate that you have an LOI signed for a grocer. I do have some questions about the residents that you speak of. At this time, at this time, those residents are really on the other side of the major degen. You know, and I don't recall, maybe you can remind me, you know, what retail plan is for those for those developments, because it's very likely that those developers will also want to meet the convenience-oriented neighborhood-serving retail needs of their residents on site. So, you know, I think the point is that we're trying to make sure that we're smarter about where retail should go. You know, I think, and I stated, you know, during review session that, you know, Walton is a side street. Really, it functions in many ways as a side street. And, you know, just some concerns about whether the land use rationale really is there. So if you could speak to that.
Sure. So just on your first point, yes, the lightstone projects are on the waterfront. Those have not started yet, and really, the only way to access those from the supermarket, I'm sorry, from the subway station, would be to either turn north on Walton or turn north on Gerard, and then you can go under the degen to get there. But the projects that are already under construction, the twenty-five-story building at 425 Grand Concourse is topped off. That's probably a year about till that's done. And all of the properties from one thirty-eighth street north to about one hundred and forty-fourth street on the Grand Concourse, on the same side of the Grand Concourse that sort of we are, are already under construction. One building is almost topped off. The second building probably is like another month. And between that group there, that Henry Kessler lots, it's over one thousand units coming to, you know, around the corner from us.
So.
And one other thing, I'm sorry.
For retail, you know, what are the ground floor retail offerings of those spaces?
Well, those are market-rate buildings. I'm sure they're going to have commercial, but we all know that supermarkets don't pay what other types of, you know, conventional retail would pay. And supermarkets are pretty much limited between twenty-one and twenty-five dollars a square foot. So in a building like ours, where we're not going to be underwriting, we need to underwrite to such a high number, I think that a supermarket would be better in our area than there, than that one. But I'm sure they'll have some ground floor spaces in those Grand Concourse projects.
So I think that's important for us in terms of thinking about where we want to encourage concentrations of retail activity, you know, in the places from a land use perspective where it makes the most sense, places where it's highly visible, where it's very convenient. You know, I just, I still am not convinced that this is that place. But thank you for your response.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Martin.
Thank you. Joshua, thanks for the presentation. My regards to Bill when you see him. I was really concerned, which, when I mentioned on Monday, about seeing sort of what the pedestrian experience was going to be along the major degen. I do appreciate the rendering, but the rendering really doesn't tell me what the street experience is going to be along the major degen, what functions you have on the major degen side of the street. You know, I'd like to better understand that, because that is going to be an area where people are going to be trading back and forth, and we know the environment back there right now is not conducive to really being friendly to residential.
So, yeah, we provided the rendering on the Gerard Avenue side of the street. As John mentioned, our parking garage will be, the entrance will be on that side of the street, and you have glazing and bricks, and along that streetscape, we'll have trees planted there too, brand-new sidewalks, et cetera. I still think the Walton side of the street is going to be the main streetscape of this project. Again, I don't necessarily know why you're going to have so many people walking on the Gerard side of the street, but Walton will be the main entrance, our entrance of our lobby. It'll be entrance to the stores. And if John wants to take anything else on that one, he can do that.
Well, you know, you mentioned how there are other properties being developed in the neighborhood, so eventually Gerard will be a walking street. It isn't right now, I understand that, but eventually, you know, folks are going to be walking down, there's going to be development continuing, development continuing all along, going north eventually, as we discussed, and you've outlined the various properties that are already being purchased and are being planned for development. So while not a walking pedestrian street now, it will be eventually. So I'll let John answer that question.
Add one thing to it. I mean, the back of the building, although it's the back, it will still have tons of, you know, it'll have lighting, it'll have trees, it'll have a brand-new sidewalk, and it'll definitely be an improvement to what you see there now, for sure. Go ahead, John.
So at the upper level of that base, we will have some glazing that's going to basically facilitate eyes on the street, to use Jane Jacobs' term. It is the occupied ground floor, so it is meant to be active and used and have people in that area of the floor. There is also, there's a terrace above that. We may not use that as a residential amenity terrace just because it does front on the major degen. But it is, I agree, it is a difficult urban design challenge. I think the planning for what is, you know, future development to the north, to the south, it's really the bridge that crosses there, so it is kind of at the end of the line. So it is something I think we can consider or continue to look at. So it's, but it is.
A visual would really, a visual would be very, very helpful, John. A visual would really, really, would really say a thousand words, because, you know, right now in my mind's eye, although I understand it, I can see there was some green space on the ground, so understanding the floor plan was easy for me. But really understanding how that corridor is going to work visually, it would be better defined with a visual that we could really understand what you're trying to get across.
We have looked at the aerial condition there, and it's, it is, yeah, it's just to the north of that bridge. It's at the on-ramp. I do agree with Josh that there's not going to be a lot of foot traffic in that area, at least on the Gerard side of the building.
Right.
Other questions? Then I'll thank the applicant team, and we will next hear from Heather McKinnon.
Thank you.
I am from Datner Architects, and I just, I'm making myself available if there were any additional questions. But it sounds like there are not.
I am, yes, Commissioner Ramperchak.
Commissioner, we may have lost the speaker, just so you're not asking questions and she's ignoring you. I think that, although, no, Heather is still on. I'll ask her down mute. Here we go.
Okay, yes, I'm here. Yeah, the cellar was specifically looked at with the rock condition, and from the plan, you can see we've located things closer to the Gerard side where the rock is a little bit lower, so that is being taken into consideration in how the building is sited to deal with those rock conditions. But we don't think there's going to be anything in particular challenging, because we have done some exploration of those site conditions.
And how about the location of this bicycle parking for the tenants?
I don't think there is a specific location planned for the bicycle storage at this point, but it will be provided as required.
Thank you.
Commissioner, please.
Hi, I had some questions about the ground floor. Did you also look at scenarios that did not include ground floor retail? And, you know, from a design perspective, you know, what are the challenges in, you know, changing that ground floor use for, you know, at this stage?
We did look at potentially adding community facility space there, so that is under consideration as well. But I think there is not a strong desire to put residential on the ground floor, as that often creates a not very welcoming streetscape when there are bars on the windows and people have their shades drawn. The feeling was that having Feeling was that having either a commercial space or community facility would really. Facilitate the eyes on the street as John mentioned and being able to have really nice glazing and a more open. Experience for for people walking down Walton Avenue.
You know, I I guess I I disagree with that perspective. There are lovely buildings with ground floor residential and I, you know, I. I often feel it's a lack of imagination when we say we can't design. You know, ground floor residential, you know, community that needs residential. I think it would have been helpful to understand. You know, really what an alternative that might have looked that that way could have been. But thank you.
Other questions? Then thank you, and we'll turn to our next speaker, who is Alex Moskowitz.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, my name is Alex Moskowitz. I I am with the applicant team. I'm. I work for VHB as the environmental consultant on this project. I wanted to make sure I was available if there were any questions.
Thank you. I am not seeing any raised hands. So thank you for being available.
Thanks for your time.
At this point. We have no other speakers signed up. I would ask if others have signed up during the course. Of this hearing.
We have no further speakers on this item.
Thank you. Then this public hearing is closed.
Next item. Earl Queens, calendar numbers twenty eight and twenty nine. CD six, calendar number twenty eight. C two zero zero two seven two Z M Q. Calendar number twenty nine. N two zero zero two seven three Z R Q. Public hearing in a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning sixty eight dash nineteen Woodhaven Boulevard rezoning.
Our first, our first speaker will be Frank St. Jacques.
Madam Chair, I'm recusing this matter.
Thanks so much, Commissioner Rumperschok.
Good, good morning, Madam Chair Commissioners, Frank St. Jacques, Ackerman LLP for the applicant. Next slide, please. This application is for a zoning map amendment to change existing C eight one and R four zoning districts to R six A and R six A C two three zoning districts. And a zoning text amendment to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area within the rezoning area. These actions would facilitate the development of a seven story mixed use building with eighty seven units. Next slide, please. The rezoning area was mapped in nineteen sixty one with the current auto oriented C eight one district and low density non contextual R four district. Next slide, please. The rezoning area includes the approximately twenty six thousand square foot development site and the adjacent site to the east, which is improved with a six story and basement. Sixty nine and a half foot tall residential building that is non compliant in the R four district. You can see the other, other two similar six story and basement multifamily buildings to the south and southeast of the development site on this map. As well as Woodhaven Avenue, which bounds the development site to the east, which is a wide street. Several bus lines are available in the area, providing connections to the subway and Long Island Railroad Service. Next slide, please. The proposed R six A C two three and R six A districts would be mapped along the six, along sixteenth road. Between Woodhaven Boulevard to the west and Alderson Avenue to the east. Next slide, please. The proposed development is a new seven story mixed use building with eighty seven units. The applicant has agreed with the, has agreed to lower the building. Per the community board's request to a height of seven stories and also to provide lower levels of affordability. By providing two of the three M I H income bands at sixty percent AMI. In addition to certain construction and notification protections requested by the community board. The proposed increase in density is appropriate here because of the existing built context, its location on a wide street across from significant open space and is near public transit. Next slide, please. The proposed development at seven stories, which is about seventy three feet, eight and a half inches tall, lines up with the adjacent multifamily building directly to the east. Which is about sixty nine feet tall. Here are some illustrative renderings show the proposed building in context. Next slide, please. And finally, the mandatory inclusionary housing program requires a set aside for permanently income restricted housing. This project is partnering with HANOC to be the nonprofit M I H administering agent. And a representative from HANOC is available, is available for questions if needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the commission? Not seeing any. I'll thank you for your testimony. And we'll note for the commissioners that Richard Winslow and Silas Leavitt, both from HANOC are available for questions. Okay, Ryan, that is, those are the only folks who have signed up on this matter. Has anyone else registered during the course of the hearing?
There are no further speakers on this item.
Okay, then this public hearing is closed.
Our next item. Calendar number thirty, Earl Brooklyn. CD six, C two one zero zero four nine Z M K. A public hearing in the matter of an application for zoning map amendment concerning three hundred Huntington Street.
This will be a team presentation, a ten minute team presentation by a team comprised of Eric Vass. Sue McCoy, William Stein, Gina Worth, Zach Longmore, and Carolyn Harris.
Hello, thank you, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Terrific. Want to thank you for holding this public meeting. I'm gonna pass this over to Caroline Harris. She's the managing partner of Goldman Harris. But first I want to say that, you know, this application. Is extremely important to Menadna Construction. They've been a fixture in in Brooklyn for over forty five years. I think Nick Limbo, who is the, he's the owner and proprietor, has a longstanding relationship with the community. And their current headquarters are located over on Third Street. And this action, these actions will allow them to relocate. Within the the district. So with that, let me see if I can pass this over to Caroline Harris. Hold on one second. Actually, if I may. Let me introduce you to William Stein. He's the architect involved in this application. Bill, is it okay? Would you like to take us through the design of the building? Before I pass it back to Caroline?
Yeah, that'd be fine. I'd be happy to do that.
Great. Which slide would you like?
Just the rendering, which I believe is the next slide. Yes, that's great. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, given the limited time we have and the. Issues we want to cover in this presentation. I did want to address a question posed by the commission. And well firstly, let me say good morning, Commissioners.
I didn't know what it, I didn't know I said what's up.
Bill's gonna take.
My name is.
Did you say what I said?
My name is Bill Stein, the architect with Datner Architects. Pleased to be here with you today. I wanted to address a question that the commission. Posed regarding sustainable features of this project. There will be a number of sustainable features, a well insulated building envelope, high performance windows. Low, high efficiency LED lighting, high performance HVAC systems, low flow plumbing fixtures. We have a green roof, site drainage from within the site. Through a treatment unit is discharged to the canal, not so as not to burden the city sewer system. And we have green roof elements on the roof of the building. And one of the main subjects of this rezoning is to eliminate parking on this site in this transit rich. Location, which we believe is a sustainable strategy to reduce traffic emissions, et cetera. So I I think I heard Carolyn. Ready to speak, so I'll turn it back to her.
Good morning, I'm Caroline Harris. You all know me as Carrie and I'm a partner. At Goldman Harris. We represent the applicant. It's really good to see you. It's been ages. And I want to thank you for holding the public meeting by Zoom. And for recognizing the importance of this project for economic development in Brooklyn. I want to also thank and commend the Brooklyn office, especially Jonathan Keller, along with Alex Summers, Gay Golan. The TRD team of Emretha, Kenny Ramneri, Kirsty and Council William Vidal. They've been doing great work with us. We're seeking a rezoning from M two one to M two three on behalf of three hundred Huntington Street LLC. Which is an affiliate of Menadna Construction. They are a top builder of affordable housing in New York City. That currently employs about two hundred and fifty people, eighty of them in their current headquarters in the Gowanus. But they're growing and they need more space, which was the reason for them looking at this site. The principal Nick Limbo has been headquartered in Brooklyn for forty five years. And he wants to keep his business not just in Brooklyn, but in the Gowanus, along with the jobs that he's producing there. He found this site, but the parking requirements under M two one district make it infeasible to have both parking and a construction yard at grade. Vertical parking above grade is very expensive and would create a bulk compliance issue. And parking couldn't go below grade because of the high water table. So this rezoning to M two three does not increase the F A R or change the uses permitted in the previous M two one district. It simply has no parking requirement. And it's a perfect solution for this transit rich area. With the Smith Ninth Street Elevated Subway Station on the corner. B fifty seven and B sixty one buses and bike paths all nearby. So this is a transit oriented manufacturing development, a sustainable solution to Menadna's dilemma. We're also seeking certification of a public access area with five waivers. That focuses on sustainability and resiliency. Two of the key features that are the targets for many of the. Esplanades we hope to see in the Gowanus. We're excited that this sensitive design will be the southern gateway to the Gowanus WAP. At least until the M T A improves its site, which is to the south of ours. With flexibility and how it may be used and beautiful resilient landscaping. This esplanade will be a welcoming entrance to the future esplanade. We can't wait to walk on it. We intend to use the rest of our presentation to answer questions raised in the review session and any others that you may have. I've already been assisted by Bill in that and I'd like to turn it over now to. I'll be turning it over to Gina Worth, who is the design principal of Scape Studio and author of the Gowanus Lowlands Master Plan for Gowanus Canal Conservancy. And you've already met Eric Vass, our plant, planning and development consultant from Goldman Harris. And we have available to answer questions Zach Longmore of Menadna, Frank Dubinsky of Menadna. Tom McMahon of T L M Associates and Sue McCoy from Phil Habib and Associates. So Gina, you're on.
Thanks, Caroline. If we can go to page five, that showcases the esplanade design. I'm going to run through some of the questions that were asked by the commission, answer them. And happy to talk further if requested on the general design overview of the project. And we were asked to explain how the project intersects with the M T A site and four fifty nine Smith Street. We're very happy to say that the site provides continuous public access to the the proposed four fifty nine Smith Street site in the future. And to the M T A site to the south, should that be provided by the M T A. We were also asked to describe the scheme and connection to the Gowanus Canal Conservancy Lowlands Master Plan. As Caroline noted, Scape was a collaborator on the master plan with many other partners. And are very happy to report that this site design embodies many of the Lowlands principles. First of all, it embodies a resilient site design. We have a tiered esplanade with a lower path and a lifted grove. To protect the site from sea level rise, but to also bring people closer to the water's edge to feel connected to the canal. We're implementing many materials that are reflective of the industrial heritage and history of the canal. We have an expanded activated grove that is adjacent to active retail that fronts the canal so that there's constantly. Eyes on the space and a very flexible environment that can be used and programmed by many. Slides six show some of our native and adaptive planting that we're proposing, which conforms with the Lowlands vision. And creates a sustainable and urban ecological site. We're also very pleased to report that, as Bill mentioned. The site stormwater is being captured, treated, and then sent through a series of planted beds before it moves into the outfall. And it's not contributing or expanding any type of C S O discharge within the greater watershed. So it's helping to improve water quality. Finally, we know that boat access is very important to the greater community. However, this site is quite limited in terms of its overall width. And there are many other sites that are being planned as part of the greater rezoning that are more amenable to boat access. We do know that the the landowner, Menadna, is very interested in providing emergency egress from the canal and is committed to providing a ladder to enable that in the future. Off of the bulkhead. I think with that. It looks like we're running. Out of time, but I. Just wanted to note that many of the waivers that we are seeking as a team. According to D C P and Jonathan Keller can speak more on this, three of the five waivers would be addressed within the greater WAP proposed for Gowanus. And there are two additional waivers that we're seeking here. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll turn it over to the commissioners for questioning. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Could you go back to the initial rendering where you have the building looking? With a view from the canal? No, the first.
That's slide one.
Slide two.
Or two.
No, the first rendering, I mean, the.
Slide one, I believe.
I guess it is. The first one that you that you put up with. Okay, that one. Yes, thank you. Could you? The appropriate person talk about the safety barriers along the. Along the. Along the waterfront there. I'm thinking specifically of children and intrepid youngsters who. I'm sure will will wanna, you know, traverse that 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 area and and that site. What kinds of barriers? Will you have there? I mean, the visual barriers are very clear, but I'm I'm thinking more of 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 safety barriers. Not visual barriers. I think, you know, the visual access is clear, but I'm.
You know, would you, would you answer that question, please?
Yes, I can speak to that. And that's directly related to one of the waivers that our team is seeking. We have a guard rail around the entire perimeter of the site that acts both as a. A place to put your hand, defines the edge, but also acts as a safety barrier to prevent anyone from falling into the canal. We very intentionally stepped that guard rail back a couple of feet. So there can be planting at the water's edge, which is one of the goals of the Gowanus Lowlands Plan.
What's the height of the the guard rail?
It's the required forty eight inches, I believe. Forty two, forty two inches. From the pavement side, our planting bed steps down on the other side, so it's a little bit higher on that edge, which is why we have the the request for the waiver.
Thank you.
If we could take down the photo. So that I could see the commissioners. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Bernie.
Thank you. Yeah, Bill, Gina, I just want to congratulate you on, I think you did a good job on a very tough site. I'm very happy to see this site developed and. Compliments to to Nick Lambo as well for for taking it on. It's not an easy site and. It's just terrific to see it developed in in such a good way. And I I thank you for all of that. I do have just one. Comment, I guess, for Gina, and that's the, in the landscaped area in front of the building. landscaped area in front of the building alongside the canal, you have this steel structure, which I just wonder whether that's a good idea. It seems to me it could become a maintenance problem and possibly an attractive nuisance, and I just don't see that it's necessary for the quality of that space. So that's my only caveat on what I think is a great project.
I would love to be able to speak to that, because I think one of the the goals of both the Lowlands Plan and the greater community is to have a creative space that embodies the industrial history of the canal, and that arbor structure hosts native vine plantings and also provides a reference using industrial trusses that reflect the industrial history of the canal. So we saw as an important element that established a unique character for the Gowanus. Also, the development team is fully committed to maintaining that over time, but I appreciate your comments and I understand the concern.
Okay, and the industrial history of the canal is throwing a lot of crap into the canal and don't know quite the relationship there, but listen, as long as it's properly maintained and cared for, then, you know, you're probably okay, but that was my only thought. Okay.
Commissioner Tuck.
Thank you. Good seeing you, Carrie. Question, will your project be taking advantage of any of the IDA benefits?
I'd like Frank Dubinsky to answer that if he's on.
Frank's not on, but I can address that. We have been talking with the IDA about pursuing benefits. We're still figuring out what makes sense for this project, but discussions are ongoing.
And in those discussions, were there any restrictions placed on the use for a certain amount of time? Should you have to take advantage of the benefits from the IDA?
We are talking about the split between traditional, commercial, and more maker space type use, but we're also in discussions with Councilmember Lander's Office and the South Brooklyn IBC, the IBC organization in the area on that topic.
And can you, do you know the timeframe that they would require you to have those commitments in place for the types of use that you mentioned?
It is, we haven't established exactly what that'll be yet. We're trying to look at it to kind of line up with the benefits, the abatement benefits we'd be looking for.
Right. I love to see this project take advantage of the IDA's programs, which will benefit both you and it'll make sure that it stays within the proper usage for many years.
It would as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the commission? Then thank you to the applicant team. And we will now turn to our next speaker, who is Sandy Renz.
I love doing this. Okay, I'm just, I live in Gowanus. I've lived here for 30 years, and I I agree to the lesson, the parking, not, you know, not to make more parking there, but I think that the public should have canal access, and I think in what I saw, it seems that that's a very easy possibility, and they want to feel connected to the canal. What better way to feel connected to the canal than to actually have access to the canal? And that's what I want to say.
Thank you. Questions from Ms. Renz? Thank you for testifying.
Okay, bye-bye.
Our next speaker will be Owen Foot.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Owen Foot. I helped found Mr. Dredgers Canoe Club 22 years ago, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the 1,500 members of our organization. Today, we speak against the proposed rezoning of 300 Huntington Street with conditions. Not opposed to the use or bulk of the architect's proposed building, we actually applaud the goal to reduce parking and reduce dependency on vehicle transport to and from work. All employees should also be offered free city bike membership from the landlord. We object to the shoreline edge design. We understand that it may cost $3 million to build it, and we suggest that the applicants should save their money as is instead. Currently, public dead-end street of Huntington offers visual access and physical access from the waterway, and the proposal would install railing and other barriers to prohibit continued use. Two years ago, we started canoeing the filthy Gowanus Canal, and Huntington Street was known for prostitution, mongrel dogs, and a spot to purchase drugs. Despite those characters, the Gowanus Dredgers Canoe Club worked with then-adjacent older concrete to improve street end, and we began using the end of Huntington Street to pick up passengers arriving from low-income neighborhoods of Red Hook and Sunset Park. A few years later, F-line bagels opened at 9th Street and one block away with the best bagels in Brooklyn, so we began to encourage visiting kayakers and rowers, as well as motorized boaters, including the fleet of Gowanus tugboats of Gowanus Bay to stop at Huntington Street for food supply. Since November of last year, Huntington Street Landing has been the docking station for workers involved at the EPA Superfund Direction Program. Thankfully, access was there, which promises significant improvements of the Gowanus water quality in the near future. Following the completion by EPA, Huntington Street would be used for wreck boating, for school education programs, for maritime accommodations, but only, only if access to our waterway is provided. We don't want people to climb over the railings or traverse through the rough surfaces and those stepped areas as shown by the design. We want them to have a safe access to and from the water. The nearest of the location is over a mile distant at Second Street, near the mostly affluent Carroll Gardens neighborhood, and the second closest location is next to Louis Vuitton Pier in the finding section of the Red Hook neighborhood. We urge City Planning Commission to insist that the applicant modify the proposal to include 20 feet of accessible space for the shoreline boating and teacher accommodation. Gowanus Dredger Canoe Club looks forward to continued collaboration with schools of Sunset Park and Red Hook, but please don't take our waterfront access away. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Foot. Questions from the commission? Thank you for testifying, and thank you for the visual images. Our next speaker will be Graham Burchall.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, welcome.
I don't know if you can see my video, but I'm Graham Burchall. I am the president.
Let's restart the clock. We we need to, we promoted him. We turned on his mic, then we promoted him. There's a little snafu, so we'll get him back in the room and get him going. There you go. Mr. Burchall, can you start? Sorry about that.
That's fine. I am Graham Burchall. I am the president of the Downtown Boat House, which has provided free public kayaking in mostly in Manhattan for the last 25 years. We are the world's largest free kayaking program. And like Owen Foot from the Gowanus Dredgers, I am, I don't think it's appropriate or safe to to separate a public walkway, public street from a public waterway. I predict that over the duration, the many years that this will exist, this will create a safety issue. I know the developer is often to put it in a ladder, but honestly, in a city of eight million people, that doesn't scale. I've got 200 boats in my boat house, and I can't put them on the water because I can't get them off the water in five minutes, which is what I need to do if there's a security situation or a lightning storm or just something problematic. If you look at the design of the Gowanus Canal as it is proposed to be used for boating, and it will be used, you're spending money to make it usable. The developers' pictures show it being used. You have to have multiple access points and from the water, or you're basically creating a safety issue. And I really, I understand that one of the speakers has already mentioned how they need to keep children away. You can achieve that, and you can achieve also the ability to get people off the water safely. It's just a design issue. It doesn't cost you money. You just have to solve both problems. You'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burchall. Questions from the commission? Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Robert Markuski.
Good morning, everybody.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Robert Markuski. I teach a career technical program at the New York Harbor School. This program is called Marine Affairs and Environmental Advocacy. The route in which I got to this current position and my career originated at the Gowanus Canal just over 10 years ago. Being here today is a privilege and enhancing my coursework with my students, seeing examples of the city planning process, and some are even here to testify about the Huntington Street issue. About 10 years ago, I was a National Park Service Ranger on Governor's Island. Part of my duties was becoming a ranger in the classroom. It just so happened a school focused on similar missions as the park service on the same island as the monument. I started working with the Harbor School in its ninth grade field class. I remember vividly the day that I went to the Gowanus Canal to assist the teachers in lessons about the New York City waterfront and how its history evolved and left us with the canal as it is today. I helped rowing the students up and down the canal to observe the landscape, discuss the waterways past and present state, and test the water quality. The students' place-based learning couldn't rival any other experience. Moreover, the waterfront should be accessible to all, developed and cleaned in such a way that it can offer opportunities for access. This encounter with my students in the canal spawned where I am today, actively pursuing a career, encouraging students to infiltrate local policy. You notice some of the viewers on YouTube and hopefully hear from Hassan, a senior in my program. Working with the Gowanus Canal years ago inspired me to pursue a career in teaching New York City's youth to engage in policy and create equitable solutions for all stakeholders. The current plan for this Huntington Street does not do that. The current plan of this waterfront is not dedicated to allowing access to the water for all communities. In that case, you will prevent educators of the New York Harbor School, a New Harbor Middle School, and other local community educators from access to place-based learning experiences. Multidisciplinary educational opportunities onsite are vital to the success of our city's future. Suppose you wish to appease other parties going with the current plan rather than the youth in the community. Members will, surrounding community members who will inherit the city, proceed with the plans to limit access. I urge you to move forward with this advice. The Gowanus Canal is in the process of a superfund cleanup project, and as we plan for our future, easy use of the once-contaminated canal water should be integral to those plans. You know, I'm gonna stop rambling. I'm reading off a script here. Ultimately, the current plan does not allow access to the water. Just to respond to what a commissioner had asked about safety, the best way to keep teenagers from jumping a fence, don't put a fence.
Mr. Markuski, I'm afraid your time is up, but I'll turn it over to questions from the commission. Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, I don't have so much a question as an observation. We're sitting here quietly listening to Mr. Markuski and the three previous speakers speak impassionately about the importance of access to the waterfront. I just wanted to let everyone know we're listening. This is what the Eulert process is supposed to be about. And this is obviously an issue that we're going to have to dig into and understand in the follow-up discussion of this application. We had Gina Worth mention that this wouldn't be the best location for public access. I think that's obviously being challenged by this testimony, and we were going to have some follow-up work to do on it, but so thank you to all of us for, thanks, thanks to all of you for putting a point on this issue and helping us understand what it really is.
Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you, Mr. Markuski, for your testimony. Our next speaker is MD Meheraj Hassan.
Good morning, everyone. My name is MD Meheraj Hassan. I'm a student at New York Harbor School, and I'm in the Marine Affairs and Marine Policy Program. It brings me great privilege to be here, and this opportunity allows me to show you how what I'm doing in my school, New York Harbor School, prined me for this moment, advocating for equitable community development and common sense waterfront progress of coastal communities. New York City is a city of students who live on islands, yet opportunities to touch our waterways are very limited. The current access to and from Gowanus Canal at the dead end of Huffington Street is the best opportunity for students from my school to conduct water sampling, ecological sampling, environmental programs, and other field work, other field work away from Governor's Island due to, due to its convenient one-block walk from Smith 9th Street, subway station served by FNG lines in the MTA. While the existing shoreline is a broken-down rocky edge, the launch site should be, the launch, the launch site should be improved to accommodate boating and extraordinary exploration better, instead of installing vertical seawall head rails that are difficult and dangerous to climb over. I'm also, I also love to touch New York's water, and I chose an education focus on marine affairs and policy exploration. Many of my classmates are interested in the development and access of.
I'm afraid that we've lost your connection, Mr. Hassan.
Yeah, it looks like we lost the connection.
Away from us. The Gowanus Canal is also in the process of a superfund cleanup project, and as we plan for our future, easy use of once-contaminated canal water should be integral to the plans. An access site was constructed, an access site was constructed at Second Street about a mile north from Smith 9th Street, subway that serves the gentrified community of Carroll Gardens. Still, Huffington Street Launch Site is the only location convenient convenient for our, for our less affluent Red Hook and Sunset Park communities besides Huntington, Huffington Street, and is the only dead-end street at the southern Gowanus portion affording such opportunities. Please improve our access to the water of Huntington Street. Please don't take it away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan, and thank you for taking time from your studies to testify your questions from the commission. Again, thank you. Our next speaker will be Rob Buchanan. Please go ahead, Mr. Buchanan.
Thank you. My name is Rob Buchanan. I work for Billion Oyster Project, which is closely affiliated with New York Harbor School, and I'm just here to to second a lot of what's been said today. I don't think it is worth me going into great depth, but we we believe in this access point as an incredible community resource, mainly for educational reasons, but we use boats a lot too, and it's also valuable in that way. So instead of underscoring those points, which you've already heard and I think understood, I just wanted to maybe add a couple of things that might be helpful as you deliberate on this, and I know you have to come back and discuss this again in a couple of weeks, but one thing that I'd like to say is that I personally have been involved in discussions about the comprehensive waterfront plan that City Planning has put together twice, once 10 years ago, and then more recently, the new plan. And both times, what I remember, the waterfront contingent, among the leading points that the waterfront contingent made was that street ends are public, and the default position of the city should be that every street end is an access point, and that, I mean, Mike Morell and his team heard that, nodded. We're going to work on this, and I just feel like here we are 10 years later, kind of back in the same spot. Here is an opportunity where we already have limited access. It's not perfect, and we're, instead, the proposal is to remove that. That would really be a step backwards and unfortunate, I think. And then, you know, the other detail I think I can add that would be helpful is that the Harbor School on Governor's Island has been a big success, and so now the Department of Education is launching a harbor middle school, and that's going to be in Red Hook. They're going to start construction on that very soon. And so there is going to be a harbor-focused school very nearby, and this would be the obvious access point to the canal for that school. Also have access on the harbor side, but to have access in both places to do comparative studies, maybe to boat from one spot to the other, is, it's going to be a tremendous resource for that school and for the community, so we really hope that you can seriously consider this request. We, otherwise, all in favor of the zoning change. Sounds like a good thing, beautiful design. But let's really seize this opportunity and set a precedent, a new precedent for how the city can approach street ends, which are public, and as Graham said, public. And as Graham said, public, public access to public waterways. That's what this is about. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for your testimony and for targeting it to raise additional points not raised by the prior speakers. Appreciate it. Questions from the commission? Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. Our next speaker will be Brad Vogel.
Good morning. Thank you very much for having me, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Brad Vogel and I am the captain of the Gowanus Dredgers Canoe Club. I'd like to echo what many of the speakers have said already today about the importance of waterfront access at this site. I did want, though, to mention specifically the point that was raised about not needing full water access at 300 Huntington because other sites might be available pursuant to the proposed Gowanus rezoning. I don't think that's a great way to proceed here. This is the opportunity we should be looking at. It's, it's a street end on the lower part of the canal. As someone who uses the canal a great deal, it matters whether you have access on the lower part of the canal versus the upper. We already have access at the upper, but we don't have good access on the lower. It's limited at this point. And I also don't think that the commission should make a decision here based on a presumption that the proposed Gowanus rezoning will be passed. That is not known at this time. The other practical thing to keep in mind is, you know, when you see those beautiful renderings of the kayaks in the canal, which is great. And again, as many of the speakers have said, we don't have a problem with the rest of this application. Just remember that most of the canal with every passing day, there are more segments of the canal bulkheads that are now sheer steel bulkheads instead of the collapsed wooden or stone or debris based bulkheads that made up the bulk of the canal landscape and shoreline for many decades. So the proposal, the note from Ms. Worth that there might be a ladder installed is great, but it's not enough. This is a chance for the commission to show a new way that takes into account the fact that we're dealing with a limited resource. Waterfront access at a public street end, serving a different part of the community and really different communities than any other launch site along the canal today. And it is, as I've said, it's not guaranteed that other properties, most, most of the rezoning is on the upper part of the canal. So any sites that would actually improve to include access would not be available to someone trying to get a watercraft in or out of the canal on the lower canal. So we hope the commission will take a serious look at requiring real waterfront access here for watercraft users. The other thing to consider is that along the bulkhead where the fences, and I agree that fences definitely are not the best thing here in terms of safety. But think about putting in marine bollards and requiring marine bollards so larger ships like tugs can pull up and dock alongside this manufacturing site. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vogel. And I see we have a question from Commissioner Capelli.
It's not really a question for the last speaker. It's more echoing Commissioner Levin's comments from earlier. I believe I speak for most of us when I say that the applicant is going to need to address many of these issues that have been raised by the the speakers seeking waterfront access. I know that I'll be looking very carefully to see how this matter is addressed before we reach a resolution on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Capelli. And thank you, Mr. Vogel, for your testimony.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Priscilla Figueroa.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Okay, so I'm very happy to be here. I am the proposed, the principal that will be leading that middle school that was mentioned just a few minutes ago. So my name is Priscilla Figueroa. I am currently the principal of the Red Hook School, PS 676. And we have done some work with the harbor school and with the DOE to transition into potentially and proposing the need for a middle school. As it was mentioned, the middle school has been something that is considered and definitely a need for our students in our community, especially since we live in a waterfront community. With that said, we've had some partnerships with folks that do support the educational needs of our students. And we are working in collaboration with the harbor school to prepare our mentorship program as we speak. The opportunity to access water would be a one of the most important things that we can do for our students. Place based learning is extremely important. I know this was mentioned before. Making sure that our students have various ways to access the water and learn in the places in which they can make a connection, explore, problem solve. I also want to say that one of the things that we really need to consider is access to water for the sake of diversity. We want our students, all students, all races, all colors, all families to have access to water and understand the importance of of the needs of their community and advocate. So one of the other things that we've been working on and we plan to do this moving forward as we develop our, continue our partnership with the harbor school is to ensure that we support the needs of school students by, you know, advocating. One of the CTEs that I know the high school does focus very strongly on is the marine affairs. And I feel like there is a lot of opportunity there for students to begin to advocate for their community, their needs, how they learn, how, you know, their needs in terms of learning, how they learn best. And we can really build leadership that way. And I understand that the topic right here is simply about accessing, you know, the water at the Gowanus Canal. But I have, I'm, I'm, I'm born and raised in Carol Gardens. So I know when that particular area was not accessible to folks. People would pull their nose as they walk by the area. You you couldn't canoe in that water. And I know it's unsafe. However, I don't think that we should stop the conversation and not allow access to the water simply because it is not safe. I think it should open up an opportunity for folks to think about how to make it safe and allow access to the families, the community and to our educators to ensure that our students are given the opportunity to be educated appropriately, especially as it relates to our maritime studies. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much for testifying, Principal Figueroa, for the work that you do every day for our students.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Questions? Well, I want to thank all of the speakers for especially coaching testimony today on this matter. Brian, I don't see any others, but if you could check if others have signed up during the course of this hearing.
There are no further speakers on this item.
Okay, so this public hearing is closed. And I would then ask the secretary if there is other business before the commission.
Just one housekeeping matter, if I may.
Please.
For those of you who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal through DCP's webpage or by mailing your comment to City Planning Commission, Counter Information Office, 120 Broadway, 31st floor, New York, New York, 10271.
Thank you, Edwin. And with that, this public hearing is closed. A good afternoon to all of the commissioners and the DCPers on this call. Bye.
See you all soon.
Bye.
A good day.
Thank you. Good evening.